Good afternoon. I have four P M. So we will go ahead and get started. We'll start with having clerk call roll.
Chair Winham.
Here.
Vice Chair Willem, absent. Commissioner Balkovic.
Here.
Commissioner Minor.
Here.
Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Nance. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then what I would like to do next, we're going to go on to approval of minutes. And it wasn't this particular city attorney representative, but another one schooled me a little while back on, on that the importance of if even if you're not here for a meeting to participate in approval of the minutes. And I feel that I just want to make sure since last meeting was a, or even the last couple of them, there were some big items. I do make sure even if I'm not here that I watch them on YouTube and then compare that to the notes. So I just thought I'd pass that along and then move on to approval of minutes. Any discussion, input, or motion?
I'll move for approval of the minutes as submitted.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is unanimous. Announcements, I would just announce for any audience members that wish to speak on an agendized item or a non-agendized item. Yes, we do have that on the agenda. Please find a little purple card in the back of the room. Put your name on there and what item you wish to speak to. You can just keep it plain language. Hand it to one of our clerks up here and it will find its way up to us. When we do get to the public comment period, there'll be a timer that will be set for three minutes. You'll get about a 30 second warning just to keep things moving along. And with that, I will move on to planning commission items. Consent calendar, we do not have any. Item four B, public hearings. And four B one is a use permit 2025 01347 by Faithworks Community Coalition as articulated in the agenda. With that, I will turn it over to staff to give a report.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. All right. So this is a use permit application that came in to the city a couple of months ago. The address is at eight fifteen eight twenty five Parkview Avenue and 2025 Leland Avenue. That's right across the street over here from us. As you can see, there's City Hall right there on the, up there on the board. The zoning designation for this project is mixed use, design review overlay, neighborhood commercial. The general plan designation is neighborhood commercial. Little bit of background with this project. This is a grant funded project and the city has provided a loan to the builder to assist with the development of the property. This project is proposed to be mixed use, which means residential and commercial uses are combined on the property. This project proposes two buildings, one which will have 14 units with all units qualifying as affordable and two units to be utilized for transitional housing with office space. The other building is proposed as a community room. As you can see, the project proposal pushes the buildings closer to the street here. This is the site plan. They got the parking lot in the back. This type of building placement is to help create a more pedestrian friendly environment along Parkview Avenue. This application is also requesting that the planning commission considers allowing the project to utilize nine on-street parking spaces to meet the commercial parking requirement. Parking ordinance, chapter 1841 O three O L two has a unique section, which, section for projects in the Parkview Avenue mixed use corridor, which states parking on-street may be granted with a reasonable distance to serve the needs of the project. A note I would like to make is that in the staff report packet draft conditions of approval, condition number 18 should be removed from the conditions if the applicant is granted approval. In discussions with REU, since this packet was printed, I was informed there could be a potential undergrounding project along Leland Avenue in the future. So the elevations, an architectural review committee met to review this proposed development along Parkview Avenue frontage and the consistency with Parkview Avenue revitalization plan and design guidelines. The design of the building displays varying height to avoid a boxy appearance. The short portion of the building to the right there is at a similar height to the single family house next door. And it was drafted in this fashion so the neighboring home wouldn't be dominated by a two-story structure. Building elevation show the building consisting of painted fiber cement panels and painted metal. This is the back of the structure. There is an alley to the south. So this is what you would be seeing from the alley essentially. The architectural review committee approved the elevations on October 21st, 2025 with the condition that two trees were added to the project frontage along Parkview Avenue. We got that done real fast. I think it was about two weeks we had the meeting. General plan consistency and neighborhood compatibility. The general plan and zoning ordinance fully support mixed use along Parkview Avenue. Mixed use projects are required to be heard by the planning commission. So here we are. The residential portion of the mixed use development is to be consistent with those uses in the RM district. The office and commercial land uses are to be consistent with the uses in the office and commercial districts in the zoning ordinance. This project is proposing a relatively high density of 30 units per acre. And while there is no specific threshold for density for the mixed use area along Parkview Avenue, it is beneficial that the project offers higher residential densities in the city's core on an appropriate infill site that is close to public services and transportation. While there's quite a bit of mixed uses along the Parkview Avenue, this project land uses are compatible with the land uses along Parkview Avenue. Moving along to landscaping and trees. So there are six trees on site. Two trees will remain and four will be removed, as you can see here on the board up here. Project proposes to plant eight trees on site and condition to plant an additional two trees along Parkview Avenue. Additional trees are welcome if they fit and these details are reviewed at building permit plan check. And this is the planting plan that was provided to the city. For the environmental, staff finds the project is categorically exempt under sequel guidelines, section 15332 for infill development projects. This type of exemption exemption generally applies to projects that are surrounded by urban land uses, served by utilities, consistent with the general plan and zoning and not affected by significant environmental issues. So to conclude, the project is well supported by the general plan revital, the general plan revitalization plan and action plan policies related to Parkview Avenue and by zoning. The Parkview Design Review Committee has reviewed the project and confirmed that the applicable design criteria has been met. And staff's recommendation to the planning commission is to approve this mixed use development project with the deletion of condition number 18 and with the authorization to utilize on-street parking and confirm the project is categorically exempt in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So questions of staff from commissioners? Please.
I can't imagine that we're too overparked over there already, but just for kicks and giggles, if we were to, so we're going to say that they they have those nine off-street or on-street parking spots. Somebody else comes along and they want to build next door or nearby. Do we have a way of metric to set aside those parking and say, hey, we know that there are nine that are reserved for this project? So you're going to have to get your parking somewhere else? Or could we have projects kind of double dipping for the same on-street parking? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. There's a similar project approved down the road on Parkview Avenue for K two. There's no, I'm just remembering, trying to remember. I don't think there's any designated parking on the curb or anything like that for them to signify that. I wouldn't imagine.
And these aren't, these aren't designated. They're going to look like normal. Or are they going to be painted and designated for the building?
Right, yeah. No, they're, they will not be designated.
So anybody, in theory, anyone can park there. We're just saying, hey, we're going to credit these parking spots to the project so that it qualifies.
Correct.
Do we have an idea of the area, how parked the area is? Is it, are we using all our on-street parking? Now, I do know that we have a public parking lot across the road. So maybe that plays into it a little bit, but.
Our parking supply on Parkview is actually relatively good. There's plenty of room even on the residential side. But of course, as K two does, you know, they park across on the north side of Parkview, next to the ball fields down there. So this side of the curb line, the north side of the curb line is also available should those residents, and then there's a crosswalk, you know, immediately adjacent at the, at the market that would allow people to cross safely. So there's ample parking, we feel, on Parkview instead of encroaching into the neighborhood further if needed.
Okay, thank you.
So if I may, I think I hear you saying that there's, there's not a math or an accounting problem. It's a, or, or system. It's a visual system. And eventually we could have a whole bunch of these approved and then the next one says, sorry, you need to park your own project because there isn't any on-street parking left. I mean, that'd be a good problem to have. I'm not saying there's a problem. I'm just trying to be clear. That's how we do it.
Yes, if the, if there was further redevelopment of the single family homes as you move on Leland to the south. Yes, there could become a point where one project does now, there is an ample street parking. Right. So they would have to then mitigate. But as of right now, this project, there's ample, so there's no further mitigation for them.
Yeah. Thank you. Please.
In regard to deleting condition 18, is the REU undergrounding project adjacent to the, this application? Is it scheduled and funded? Is it a for sure thing?
No, it is not.
So are we missing an opportunity here to underground that section of utilities if REU does not come through?
So for this project, when it came in, we're looking, REU is looking for safety clearances. So that's for if electrical power lines, there's safety clearances. And so that condition got in there because maybe it was a little close. But after discussing with REU, after this packet got printed out, it was determined that it's not encroaching any safety clearances for those. And it would be a burden on the project to require them to underground this.
Okay, I don't recall this coming up at the committee meeting. No. And was the, the K two project has similar setbacks from the sidewalk. Were they required to underground their utilities?
The K two project goes all the way up to this, to the sidewalk, I believe. It's a little closer than this. These setbacks here are, I believe it's about 11 and a half feet, the awning on. These setbacks here are, um, I believe it's about eleven and a half feet, the awning on, um, Lanning Avenue. Or, sorry, Leland Avenue. It's about eleven and a half feet from the awning and then fourteen feet to the building.
Okay.
The setback. So the setbacks are quite a bit further back.
Um, I can't recall off the top of my head how much of Parkview Avenue is already underground. The utilities are underground. On the, this side of the street, by City Hall certainly. But I'm wondering if there is a, we have required other development to underground.
I believe most of Parkview Avenue is underground, but the, the streets that intersect with it, there's quite a few that do not have, uh, under, underground utilities there.
So the ones that would be running north and south?
Yes.
Okay. But Parkview itself is under, mostly underground?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we'd like to follow up on that. When the next project comes along anywhere in the city, and it's a financial burden, are we gonna do this again?
So I can jump in and help there too, because?
Intentionally ask a question, there's no answer to, because there's quite, quite an inconsistency here on some projects.
Yeah, so staff has been considering electric undergrounding for some time now. We've had a number of projects that have come in in the last year or two where we wrestle with this. So our general plan language actually says encourage development underground. It doesn't say shall. Um, REU service policy actually doesn't require it either, per se. Uh, it requires, on the customer side of the meter, for them to pay for materials and conduits and conductors and that kind of thing. Uh, but actually, REU funds a lot of the electrical infrastructure that goes for development as well. And so, um, I say that because every project's unique and different. We've also had some projects where the utility is co-located with other utilities. So we have comms and we have internet and phone. And sometimes we have PGE located on our, our poles as well, or, and so the question then becomes, can we, REU can certainly jump in and underground, but the other utilities can't, or, or not without exorbitant cost to the developer. So without spending too much time talking about it, it's something that we're actually working on as we speak to bring to this body and to city council to lay out, how should we be addressing this moving forward with development projects? Because so often, we do get pushback from developers that say, hey, this is gonna kill the project, or this is gonna add a significant amount of cost. And we have general plan language that allows us to encourage it, but not require it. And then we don't have language on the REU side necessarily to say, thou shalt do it either. And so it becomes a constant sort of debate when we condition projects. And oftentimes, it's one of those first conditions to fall because we don't have the legal basis necessarily to say you have to do it. Um, and, and so we've compromised on some projects. We've required, uh, under, undergrounding of conduit and stubbing out conduit to two-hundred feet on either side of the property line for future undergrounding. We'd like to bring it back to this body in the future, um, to discuss the idea of undergrounding districts. The city has done undergrounding districts in the past, as you'll recall, on Hilltop. I wanna say maybe even Parkview was an undergrounding district long ago and far away, maybe even Cypress Avenue. So, um, we wanna bring that as a larger topic of discussion, but no doubt on this project, for the reasons that Drew mentioned, as well as the reasons I'm giving you now, it's hard for us to stay firm on that condition. Although it is the prerogative of this body, um, if the, to, to require that condition if you'd like. Um, but that's how we're treating undergrounding today with, my hope is in 2026, we can get better direction from this body and from council on how to proceed moving forward. If we wanted to hard and fast requirement, we'd likely have to move towards some kind of undergrounding district throughout the city. And I would say notably, it's because of the co-location of utilities. That's probably the biggest issue we run into is, REU would be happy to underground those, those, those utilities or at low cost to the developer, but the other utilities aren't obligated to. So that's probably the, the biggest issue we run into regularly. So, sorry, kind of a lot, but undergrounding is a, a topic that we're trying to tackle and figure out a consistent approach moving forward. So hopefully that's helpful.
It is very helpful. I appreciate that. Is, is the undergrounding requirement along frontages um, listed as a line item in any of the standard conditions of approval documents?
I don't, I'm looking at Lila. I don't believe so.
Okay.
And then I, I think our general plan language says encourage undergrounding to the extent feasible or something to that effect. And so it leaves staff with, well, our general plan guidance says we shouldn't look to do this if we can. Uh, but as we all know, it's, um, in the realm of feasibility, that's a pretty, that's a pretty general term, and it's sort of hard. It's, it's pretty easy to go there in terms of going, well, this is gonna cost X amount of dollars. It makes it infeasible. So, um, it's something we wrestle with pretty regularly in terms of how can we condition it?
No, I, I appreciate that. I was actually on a call this morning in a different jurisdiction, and it was a simple, what we thought was a pretty simple little thing, and it was a one-million-dollar issue. And so I, I know how quickly it adds up, and it's not getting cheaper.
Yeah, we also wrestle with the utility. Um, you know, overhead lines are generally easier to maintain. Oftentimes, they have better reliability. You're not underground. You're not dealing with underground water intrusion and other maintenance issues. And so you really have to actually take a step back and ask yourself, well, why does our general plan say that in the first place? And largely, it's probably aesthetics. It's probably just good development, orderly development. Um, if you ask the utility guys, they would actually say overhead lines are better in a lot of respects because they're cheaper, easier to maintain. When you're in the built environment, overhead lines and wildfire isn't a huge concern because you have a lot of non-combustible development and pavement. You're not in the wooie. Um, certainly if we were talking about the wildland urban interface or somewhere out in transmission line area where there's lots of vegetation, of course, undergrounding is, is valuable from a wildfire mitigation standpoint. But when you're talking here in the urban footprint, there, it's less about that. And, and frankly, I think our general plan more speaks to the aesthetics of just having our town look orderly and look good and take those poles down.
Very good, thank you. We're gonna take you that long speech out of your time, but no, I'm kidding you. It was, that was, that was super helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morgan, I did have one question. At some point when you were talking about the two additional trees added by the design review, I thought I heard you say something like, if they fit. And maybe I just heard that. I almost stopped you at that moment, but I just wanted to make sure. Is there clarity? Are we requiring the two trees that the design review recommended, which are not showing on the exhibits perhaps? Or is it a if they fit?
So they're required to plant eight trees.
Thank you.
So six they're showing on their plan, and then two that are required from the architectural review meeting that we had. If they can fit more on top of that, which I don't know, it's very, very, very tight site, site property, then as a planner, I'm never gonna say no to more trees.
Okay, very, very good. That, that helped clarify. Thank you. I don't, I don't have any other questions of staff. Does anyone else have questions of staff? We do down here. Thank you.
I'm going back to parking. Okay, so I'm looking at the back. Looks like there are sixteen spots, fourteen housing. People are gonna work here. Do we have any idea how many people work in this place? And can we fit all the people who work there and live there without being all on the street too?
So how it's broken down is, um, the site itself should have fourteen, at least fourteen spots on the property. And then all of the commercial or the office use, all of that is gonna be on the street.
So people would work there?
I don't know exactly how many employees they're gonna have.
Okay.
Um, so, but we calculate it based on square footage of the building.
The end.
So I could see a scenario similar to the K2 development where primarily employees are parking in public parking on-street. Whether that be immediately in, on the frontage or on Parkview. Yeah, somewhere on Parkview, on the north side, closer to City Hall.
And you know, I didn't even look. That's not meter, right?
No.
It's just regular parking.
Yep. Public parking as if it was your, right in front of your house.
Yeah, neighborhood type parking. Thank you.
Okay, another.
In regard to, um, the parking, I think it's worth noting that one of the, um, parts of this project is a community room where they could have community meetings or more activity than just staff and residents. So I imagine then you're going to have people participating in that, taking up seat, more street parking or parking in the public lot. But it's not just staff and res-
They can park across the street?
Yeah, they, they could park in our lot.
That's what I mean.
Yes, great. Yeah, it's a public.
I mean, you don't know who's parked there now, so.
Yeah, exactly. That's public parking. They can park there all day, all night. It's not, you know, unless you're doing nefarious activities, you know, would we have an issue? Right, so, but yes, yes, there's ample, because of, because of the location of the project, right? They benefit from the city's, city hall's parking lot as well.
Very good.
Okay, with that, I'll say thank you, Mr. Morgan, and I will move to open the public hearing. And I have one, um, I don't know whether it's, this is a dark blue or a purple. I don't know. It's kind of, it's kind of changing on me here. Yeah. We'll go with Perry Winkle today. Uh, we have an architect in the room, so that was for his benefit, I think. The, um, so the one card, I, I can't quite read it. I believe it says Carol Salmons. And you're welcome to come up to the lectern, either one of them, and, and speak and offer any comments. Did you have comments you'd like to make to the commission? Questions? Well, here's what we'll do. Then go ahead and go over there to the microphone if you don't mind. You can pick either one. You can take the low seat if she, yes, she's turned that on. Um, I will tell you, we're not in a position, we're in a position right now to take input. We'll write down your questions, but we probably won't answer them until we close the public hearing. But please.
So, um, this says that there's going to be a commercial building. I'm curious as to what, what, you know, what's gonna be involved in this commercial building along with this two-story and mixed-use offices, homes up above. Um, and we're concerned about the parking. My mom, who owns the property on the other side of Leland Avenue, um, you know, and she, it's all rental, um, you know, property. That, you know, that's, it's, there's nothing going to stop all of this, these new people coming in to, to, you know, park across the street when, you know, all of her renters have been there for some time. And this is, you know, space that ta- they take up. Five to six vehicles will fill that space. You know, and we're concerned about, like I said, the parking. That's, that's a lot, bringing in a lot of vehicles. And, you know, who's to say that, you know, if they find open space across the street, that people won't just use that? And then, and then it's, and our renters are, are out their parking spaces. So these are, these are concerns, you know, of hers and mine. Anyway, we, we kind of like to know what, what all, um, is going to be proposed for this, this commercial building. You know, uh, she's kind of, we've worked hard to kind of clean things up over there, as many of you may know, for a lot of years. That was, you know, not really a good situation right there. And so, um, you know, mainly myself have come in and we've gotten, you know, better renters and cleaning things up. And, uh, we're, you know, we're just concerned about, you know, what's coming in and what all's gonna be involved in this and, and how it's going to affect, you know, our renters across the street.
Okay. If, if I may, just even though I said no question at this point, just to clarify your, your comment there. It, your or your mom's, uh, rental property?
Yes.
Do you have off-street parking, meaning your own parking lot, or are they only on-street?
It's only on-street.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yes.
And how many units?
Uh, there's four.
Okay, thank you. That helped also. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And then did we get, I know, it turns out the timer wasn't working, so I was counting on you to be counting and, uh, and then I did say one other person walk up to you, but he didn't leave a card, huh? It's for the general comment, period. Okay, thank you very much. Wanted to make sure that didn't get missed. Then with that, I have no other, uh, speaker request cards. We're gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to commission and staff. And what I heard from that was two, really two, two major topics. One is, um, wanting a better explanation or more explanation of what would be in the commercial building. What, what's, what's gonna be in it? How will it operate? That sort of thing. And then the other one concerned about, uh, parking on Leland Avenue. Um, and I can, I, I tend to be rather direct, and so I'm gonna give you a simple answer of what we would, what, if we asked staff what it is, what it's going to become is first come, first served. And anybody that has parking out there in front of their apartment complex now or in front of their single-family homes down the road or on Parkview, right now they have first come, first served, and whoever gets there first next is all it's gonna be. There is no regulation beyond that. Would that be a fair statement? And I'm saying that's wrong. I just like to be very clear. I can tell that. We'll, we'll pause for a moment. Yeah, push the mechanical button. That's what, uh, Commissioner Goddard had to do.
There we go. Um, I mean, in a normal situation where it's strictly residential, yes, I would, I would say that would be appropriate, right? It's always first come, first served, right? So when you're mixed with apartment complexes, single-family residences. However, with the caveat that there is mixed-use development that could be used here, uh, there is an opportunity, um, either during the, um, because I believe this is just going to be a shell building, and then a use will come in at some point that is currently unknown.
We'll be using it for offices. Um, the applicant's representative is here, and, and my planners might know more specifics on number of staff or what that might look like, but Faithworks doesn't tend to use the commercial space for their own offices. Do you guys understand how many folks will be working there? Any, have any sense of that? No? So we just, as, as Drew mentioned, uh, yeah, if we can invite five, so they have five staff, uh, on-site, and it's not gonna be rented out. You know, this is not a commercial tenant space. It'll go out to a coffee shop or to a restaurant. It's intended to be used by Faithworks for their office staff. And so I'm seeing it's five people, and that's what we know today.
So with it, it would be a less intensive use, say, as like the little market over here. Um, obviously, first come, first served would be recommended. However, if this body would like to look at doing time and time-limited parking, uh, during that, during business hours, so that as Faithworks has clients that come in and out that may have hour, you know, a few-hour meeting, we could do some two-hour free parking. So it's just a two-hour zone, and those two-hour zones per our, or, per our Ridding Municipal Code do expire. I forget if it's five o'clock or six o'clock, but that at some point in the day, those would just become open, and they would be open on the weekends for residents of the, of the rental property to use. That is an option this body could consider if they wanted to provide parking for the business, however, not limit that there's a car parked there all day in front of the rental properties.
Now, I'd ask for clarification on that. I know, like, typically parking restriction is a council authority, but you're suggesting this body has authority to regulate the public right-of-way?
Correct. That would be, it would have to be taken to council.
There we go.
Part of the parking map approval.
So we could make a recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Would that not be as a condition of this project? It would be a separate recommendation to council, separate?
I believe it would be separate, yes.
Yeah, it seems like it would have to be a separate, uh, and, and I wanna be clear. I like, I like, I like clarity, probably to a fault, but I, um, but I'm also not personally inclined to go that route. I would personally rather say, well, this is what, I, I, I know you well enough to know this is what you do day in, day out, is deal with these issues, and as it matures, in the event there is an issue, these sorts of things that, that's in your toolkit to address, as you do all around, especially in these specific plan areas, in the mixed-use areas and that sort of thing. The other thing I would say, un- unfortunately and fortunately, and especially in a mixed-use environment, there's more winners and losers when it comes to parking. When if we all lived in single-family suburbia, it's pretty rare that there's parking wars, but it does happen. But in a mixed-use environment, it is far more common, and, and that's, that's foundational to those kinds of areas, that that's, that is what happens. I remember living in a city and I got my seven-block walk-in every morning, um, to get to the office and seven blocks to get back.
I think one other point I would make too is, um, you know, especially with the upcoming building code updates, the very real reality we're facing with on-site parking is electric vehicle charging. Um, it's a significant cost to development, and the newest code update- vehicle charging. It's a significant cost to development, and the newest code updates can actually require charging receptacles at each space for a multifamily or mixed-use development. So I think it's, it's a word of caution, and also something good for us to understand in terms of, our code does allow flexibility, we understand in a mixed-use environment that, you know, we want to be a little more creative with parking. We do have one parking space per unit, plus an additional two onsite spaces for a total of 16, is that right? So we do have a little bit of coverage. If we were to, you know, compel or condition applicants to have more onsite parking into the future, it's just a sort of a word of caution, something we're dealing with already now, because I think it's 40% to 50%, is the required amount of EV parking stalls. And in some projects, that can add hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost just in EV parking, especially with like a, a mixed-use or a multifamily development that has 20, 30, 40 units of housing. So it's a balance, and that's, it's somewhat why our code allows, although our code couldn't have foreseen this 20, 25 years ago, it is flexibility built into the code, and it's important for, for this reason, too. EV charging is a big topic.
Yeah, agreed. Mr. Minor?
Yeah, I was just going to add a little bit of context, in addition to what's been said. For one, looking at the breakdown of the apartment units, we have seven one-bedroom and seven studios, so these are not two-bedroom, these are not, a lot of, it's not a lot of people necessarily, it's probably one person. There may be an extra person, you know, here and there. In addition, the office base is 1,500 square feet. I, I would say that five would be the max that I'd want to hang out in there on a regular basis, you know, you could probably verify. But there, and then we're also talking about day use versus night use. I think I would be more concerned about night use as far as parking capacity with people who are going to be there, you know, staying there all night, overnight, that's when the neighborhood's going to be heavily parked. When we're talking about some daytime use, and we have gigantic free parking lot across the way, which doesn't concern me in this case. So wanted to add a couple comments, even though I did start the parking question, I'm not concerned about this area being overparked right now.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
Okay, there we go.
Turn mine on and leave it on all the time.
I know. Weird. I was doing it on the screen, but then it died. Okay, so I was curious, because I'm not a professional in parking, but if you have a rental like that, and there is no, like driveway or other kind of parking only on the street, there's no way for them to, like, designate that as their parking spot? Kind of like someone can't come to your house and park in your driveway because it's your driveway hooked to your house? If you just have street parking, and the building just faces the street, there's no other choices, they can't designate those for the rentals? They're just, it's just kind of first come, first served?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it's first come, first served, and, you know, unlike, I know Russ and I have experienced, right, and many of you, right, in bigger cities.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there is usually in those environments, you'll see permit parking, residential permit parking, right, that kind of reserves that, makes sure there's enough capacity for the residents. City Ridding does not have an ordinance to that effect for residential permit parking.
So they don't have the ability to, like, designate those for their rentals across the street?
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's public, right, it's public property, it has to be.
All right. Just wanted to make sure that wasn't available.
And these, you know, these likely, these units likely predate the zoning code, which does require off-street parking for residential uses, but that's for new construction.
Sure.
So I don't know the date here, but likely grandfathered in, so they don't require off-street parking.
Right. I just wondered if, since it wasn't, it wasn't an option, could they, can they carve out their little spot? But, sorry.
That's what I was going to ask. So there's no parking zones in Ridding?
Yeah, we don't. Not that I'm aware that we have an ordinance effect, I could double-check, but I've never ran across any kind of residential permit parking anywhere in the city, even in downtown.
Yeah, I mean, it, I guess as the city continues to grow, maybe that goes on the radar, because at some point, I mean, try, I mean, people that do live there, I mean, those zones do help people with the ability to be able to park, that rely on street parking, so.
Right. I think, yes, correct. I think we've, we, we do not have that ordinance because the city's density has never become so dense.
Yeah.
But yes, as we grow, those would be considerations, I think, that need to be looked at as we densify, if that so becomes the trend.
It will, it will likely become more of an issue, too, because you see even state regulations for ADU construction, for example, don't require parking onsite. So more state housing laws come down and continue to push the parking demand to the street. So as we see more laws in effect pushing that demand onto the street, I'm sure we'll have to adjust and make some changes as, as that happens, too. We see that happening today.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know of any, any communities of our size that have such zones like that?
Um, not off the top of my head that I could speak to. I'd have to look that up.
Do you know of any communities larger than ours that have those?
Yeah, I mean, the big metropolitan areas, I mean, San Diego, Los Angeles, right, a lot of those, Sacramento, they all, they all have.
So if we, if we thought about doing that, we'd have some models that we could look at over time?
Oh, oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, yep. There's some probably good ordinances and, and code out there that we could mimic if that came to be.
Thank you.
Everybody leave your microphones on, don't touch any buttons. Okay, I think we've wound down our questions, and as we transition towards concerning a motion, I want to say, even though I asked the hard questions, it really is just an interest in very specific clarity. I, you know, I honestly believe that one of the things that happens when you have a really good mixed-use thing that you've set in place is that you do have more winners and losers on project-by-project basis, and the whole area kind of organically has to shift. And that, that is, is difficult, but it's, it's for the better good of all. So, thank you. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain a motion. I think staff had recommended approval of their recommendation with removal of condition 18. Is there a motion? Oh, we have another question instead.
Drew, did the applicant object to the undergrounding of the utilities? Was it a deal killer? Or was that just something that REU said, yeah, you don't really need to do that?
So when I sent over the conditions, typically, that's one of the common objections that we get in it. So yes, once, once the applicant objected, or the representative objected, I went and double-checked with REU, made sure there was no safety issues here with clearances, and, so, yeah, that was, that was our main concern.
I was about to do it myself, there you go.
I'd like to make a motion that the commission approved the project staff recommendation, that we confirm the project is categorically exempt in accordance with SEQA, and we approved the use permit application, and, and have determined that all necessary findings for approval are in evidence. And also removing condition 18. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. I couldn't hear you talk, so that's why I had to stop. So with that, I'll say it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, which is item number five, public comment for non-agendized items. Non, non-agendized items, and so these are items that we cannot take action upon here. They're information-only, and ideally, items that were not already on the agenda. So with that, I have two speaker cards, and our esteemed and amazing clerk, who normally is dealing with microphones, is going to be doing a timer on her phone for three minutes. And, well, I don't know, I just want to know what's, how you were going to do this. With that, just the way she handed me the cards, the first one is Chris Begley, and then after that is Mr. David Ledger. I don't have a Chris Begley. So that one, I'm going to set back there, and I'm going to say David Ledger. And I think the chair has the discretion that since it's David, I'm giving you four minutes. Go ahead. Yes, sorry, I didn't, we didn't pre-plan that, but I microphone. This is a, this is a rough day.
I know. It worked fine before, and then it stopped.
There we go, okay. I was at a meeting a few weeks back with some residents of the Sunset Terrace area, and talking about Jenny Creek Trail and concerns about that. And I wanted to make something clear that I might have left the impression that Planning was holding something back from me, or Lily Toy was, but she sent, I'd sent out two other PRAs to other departments, and I never got anything back. But Lily got everything I wanted back, except for one item, but everything that she could give me. So I just didn't, and Planning usually is really good about getting stuff to me, so I didn't want to, you know, put any, any, any bad vibes on Lily. And so I really appreciated that. She talked to me after the meeting. I also wanted to say something about, I've commented about this often, about biological surveys, and they're done outside the time that plants are blooming. And so I apologize that I haven't got a full list, but I will get that to you. But I went over a couple, like the Zinco project, which was approved. I looked at that, and there were two biological surveys done. One was really bad, and I think Planning rejected it, but it was done in August, no, it was done in October. And then Galloway did one, I believe it was Galloway, going by memory here, they did it in October, another October. So that's a time when you're going to find dead grass, and you can identify rare plants, and SEQA requires you do it during the blooming period, so that a botanist can identify the plant. And I went to the Phoenix Academy near College View and Chasta View, and they did a field survey, and that area probably had some, some good plants there. I don't know if any were rare or not, because I haven't been out there and surveyed it, but they did it in December 15th. And so all you're going to identify is weeds. And so maybe an occasional plant, like if there's a shrub or a tree, you can identify it out of season. And then there was one on Wyndham Lane, which I doubt if there were any rare plants on there. And they, but they only visited it once, and they're supposed to go three times or so, you know, they say, several times during the blooming period. And they did it on March 16th, so that was good, they got it in the springtime, but it was early spring. For instance, there's Sulfur Creek Bodea, which is the rarest plant in Ridding, and it only grows in Ridding. And that will bloom, I've done surveys on it for about eight years, and it'll bloom, sometimes it'll start as early as mid-May, sometimes it won't start till mid-June, and sometimes it'll be blooming even in July, but not very far into July, depends on the heat. So it's really important that they survey more than just one time, and especially if they go in the fall, in my opinion, they're hoping not to find anything, even though there could be nothing there to find, they're not going to find it in the fall, in October, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ledger. With that, I will then move over to the next item on the agenda, which is commissioners' comments. Are there any particular comments? And I think the one that I will throw out is, and this is out of respect to Mr. Ledger's comments, we know that, we know that he's, there's a reason I knew, I know his name, it's because he's around a lot, and he, and he makes, you know, the very common assertions. It really would seem like it'd be helpful at some point, and I'm not setting a direct expectation, but at some point, some clarification, because Mr. Ledger made a statement, and again, this is not to answer it here today, the attorney will start glaring at me, is, he said, "SEQA requires," and I'm not sure that all SEQA experts would agree with that statement. And I'm not here to discuss that or get feedback on that today necessarily, but, you know, what SEQA really does require, I also know SEQA does not require perfection, that's a well-established, you know, legal precedence. I know there's several, several things. The, so at some point, it would be good to have some of these things a little tighter, and I know that that's something that is already hot on staff's mind, as you try to figure out how to balance combination of studies done, when, in some cases, just when it's expedient to do so, in the development continuum, towards, you know, towards approval, knowing that, in theory, there's a, there's an absolute binary checkpoint that occurs before the greenies are touched, and that is that there's surveys done to make sure that, you know, confirm that they really weren't there. The opinion that they weren't going to find them is actually confirmed. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it at that, and just say someday, it'd be nice to have a little bit of information about that and get some clarity on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm comfortable giving you a little, little bit of response, even though you didn't ask for it, but I, you know, just because we are thinking about it, and have even had some discussion with some of the commissioners on this topic, and, you know, Mr. Ledger brought this up at the, a previous item with the peaks. We actually do have a biologic, the biologist did a response on that project, and we could, it was in the staff packet for that project, so we could dig that up and provide it to the commission, but also, we have a few ideas we're kicking around. You know, I think we've been doing it this way at the city for, I don't want to say decades, but it might be that long, or quite a long time, and I feel pretty confident that in terms of honoring SEQA, we are doing that. It's conditioned with the project. I think Mr. Ledger's concern, as he outlined at the last meeting, was the public input process is lost in the shuffle there. So you have a botanist or a biologist that goes out and does the, the survey at the appropriate time, but then there's no opportunity for public input or public scrutiny. So we have some ideas we're also considering for that, too. So I'd like to consult with our city attorney's office and staff, and then it's still on my list to bring it back to this body as an informational item, to let you know sort of what we're thinking. And then depending on what, what this body thinks, it would probably be pertinent to bring it to council. I don't know if it'd be a policy-level kind of call, or as a lead agency, how are we going to be handling SEQA? Ultimately, the lead agency is the council, and so it'd probably behoove us to get some of their input if this body feels we should change the way we're, we're handling this particular protocol-level surveys in SEQA. So I intend to have a larger discussion with this body in the coming months. Like I said, we're already kicking around some ideas, so I would just say stay tuned. And we'll, of course, involve David in those conversations, and probably even have him come down to the office and, you know, talk through some of the ideas we're considering at this juncture. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Any other comments from commissioners? With that, we'll go to item number seven, director's report.
Yeah, not, not too much. I would just give a small, brief update on the riverfront plan, so just keep your eyes peeled for January timeframe, where we'll, we'll be looking at moving towards the notice of prep and initiating SEQA, and then that will be coming before this body, likely February, March into the spring. So I'll keep it super high level, but just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. And other than that, that's all I really had for tonight. That plan's coming forth, and we have a few things on the agenda for January, February, so we'll be in communication to make sure we have quorum, but we'll have a busy start to the calendar year in 2026.
Thank you, and the last item is adjournment, and the meeting is adjourned.